Good afternoon and welcome to the Monday, July 21st, 2025, West Fargo City Commission Meeting. I call the meeting to order. Before we begin, could I respectfully ask that everybody in the room silence yourselves? Please join the commission in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As you will note, Commissioner Jorgensen and Commissioner Zandell are joining us virtually today. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Here.
Commissioner Zandell?
Here.
Commissioner Artis?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Let the record show, all five commissioners are participating. First order of business is to approve the Order of the Agenda, commissioners that have been distributed and in your packet. Move to approve. Commissioner Anderson moves to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is to approve the minutes of July 7th, 2025. Again, they have been distributed and in your packet.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of July 7th as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. The next order is building permits. Before we begin, I call on Commissioner Anderson.
I will be recusing myself from this one. The residence I live at has worked on this report.
Thank you. Again, for the record, there were before commissioners voting on the building permits. Is there any discussion on this?
I move to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve the building permit as presented. And Commissioner Anderson is recusing himself. Commissioner Zandell seconds the motion. I have a motion and a second to approve the building permits as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. The next order of business is the consent agenda. This evening, we have items A through I, and they have been distributed and in your packets. Move to approve. Commissioner Anderson moves to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jorgensen, seconds. I have a motion and a second that we approve the consent agenda, items A through I. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. First order of business in the regular agenda is public comment. Have we had anyone sign up for public comment this evening?
I do not have anyone for public comment.
All right. Thank you. We move on to item number two. Item number two is a public hearing regarding A-24-32 Hope Lutheran Edition, a request for subdivision and zoning from A to R-1A. Aaron Nelson, Director of Planning and Zoning, will be presenting. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, President Artis, and good evening, commissioners. So item two is a request for approval of subdivision and zone change from A agricultural to R-1A, single-family dwelling. A specific requested action tonight is to hold a public hearing and to approve the first reading of the rezoning ordinance. This request comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Representatives of the application are also present tonight, should you have any questions for the applicant. So, let's see. Just got to turn my mouse on here quick, sorry. So the subject property is located at about the 4900 block of Ninth Street West, within the Wilds Development, kind of kitty-corner from Legacy Elementary. You can see the elementary school on the bottom left-hand corner of the image in front of you here. The subdivision and rezoning entitlements are requested for the purpose of building a new church at the subject property. The requested R-1A zoning district is the same zoning district as the residential properties located north and west of the subject property, shown on this zoning map here, as those properties in yellow. Religious institutions such as churches are permitted by right within most zoning districts, including the R-1A district. The proposed subdivision would plat the subject property into a single 12-acre lot. The lot would have frontage along Ninth Street West, which would provide access and public utilities to the property. So no additional public right-of-way is necessary to accommodate the proposed plat. As Ninth Street is a collector roadway, direct driveway connections to Ninth Street West would be restricted to two locations, located in alignment with 50th Avenue West and Mulberry Lane, which would be across the street. A southbound left-turn lane from Ninth Street into the subject property will be needed at the intersection of Mulberry Lane and Ninth Street to accommodate this turning movement into the subject property. The installation of this turn lane would be required prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for development on the subject property, as outlined within the subdivision development agreement, which is included in your meeting packet. In addition to those two access points on Ninth Street, the applicant has indicated that they intend to acquire an easement from the adjacent landowner to the east of this property, in order to provide a third driveway connection to Sixth Street West, which would be at the northeast quadrant of the subject property here. Additionally, on the subdivision plat, a 30-foot public trail and utility easement will run along the south side of the plat, which would provide future connectivity options for linking public trails and utility lines between Ninth Street West and the adjacent undeveloped property to the east of the subject property here. The Park District has indicated no need for land within the subject property, and so the applicant will provide cash and fee of the required land dedication as part of the subdivision. A separate public dedication agreement is also included in your packet. To date, staff has received several comments regarding the proposed application, both in favor of and in opposition to. For those in opposition, the primary concern seems to be the potential for increased traffic along adjacent streets, especially in relation to the proposed connection to Sixth Street West. Regarding this concern, staff acknowledges that the proposed development will result in increased traffic along these streets, primarily during church services on Sunday mornings and Wednesday evenings. However, from a technical standpoint, engineering has reviewed the proposal and has no concerns regarding the ability for these streets to handle additional traffic associated with this development. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on January 23rd, 2025, and then a public hearing was also held in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 11th of 2025, at which two people did speak in opposition to the proposal. A summary of the comments heard, as well as copies of all of the written comments, have been included in the meeting packet here for your review. At that February 11th, 2025 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the proposed subdivision and rezoning. And then, as outlined in the staff report, overall, staff finds the request to be consistent with city plans and ordinances, specifically in regards to their proposed rezoning. The R-1A district is, again, consistent with the existing zoning of a majority of the neighborhood, primarily to the north and west there. And then additionally, in regards to the proposed subdivision, the proposed plat meets applicable subdivision regulations. And additionally, staff would note that connectivity is one of the six principles of good planning and design identified within the West Fargo 2.0 Comprehensive Plan, as it allows traffic to disperse through multiple routes, helping to minimize congestion. So in closing, the applicant is requesting approval of the subdivision and rezoning. However, because the rezoning ordinance requires two readings, the requested action tonight is to hold a public hearing and to consider approval of the first reading of the rezoning ordinance, and then the final approvals of both the zoning and the plat would take place in conjunction with the second reading of the ordinance at a future meeting. So, that's a high-level overview. I'm more than happy to dive into any details. Like I said, too, we have representatives from the applicant, as well as should you have any questions for them. So, with that, happy to take any questions.
Hey, Commissioner Nelson. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Nelson?
I have--
Commissioner Olson.
--a couple. The Sixth Street proposed entrance/exit, is that needed for safety purposes or just for ease to get in and out? Do we need to have X number of exits on a parking lot this size, is one of my questions?
Yep. So I guess in terms of required number of entrances and exits, some of that, I think, has to do with the fire code, and some of it's specific to, you know, specifics of a development site plan. I will say, for the subdivision, though, it's not something that the city is requiring. There's no requirement that there be a third access point, is an access point, however, that the applicant would like to see.
Additional questions? Yeah. In reading the comments, there's a lot that are asking, why can't they just come right off of 52nd Avenue and head north there? But if that would happen, who would have to, you know, foot the bill for that? If that was a way to get in there and not come through on Sixth Street?
Yep. So in regards to access onto 52nd Avenue, I pulled up the plat here. The plat kind of does a good job at showing the larger kind of context of this area. To the east of the subject property here, there is a vacant tract of farm field today. And so the owner of that farm field is the one that's working with the church to subdivide the property. They've stated to city staff that they have no intention of developing that land anytime soon. And so, in order to get an access point from the subject property, 252nd Avenue would require some type of an easement or a public right-of-way of some type. And so that would either need to be acquired by the applicant or the city by, you know, some other means in order to make that connection point. One thing I'll mention, too, quickly, is included in the packet materials here is kind of a, this is a conceptual area plan. The purpose of this is not something that gets approved, you know, by the city or anything. The purpose of this is just to kind of show how this proposed subdivision fits in with the larger context of the city and the larger connection points for some of the existing streets in the area. And so the subject property, in addition to the vacant tract of farm field, has a long history with the original developer of the Wilds Development. The original developer of the Wilds has sold the larger tract to the east to a private owner at this point. And so what was originally planned to be additional single-family homes, you know, is kind of a question now in terms of what the new owner would like to do with that property at some point in the future. And so there is the potential for some additional right-of-way and a future connection to 52nd Avenue perhaps someday, but that's largely up to the current property owner, you know, to decide if and when they want to come forward with development.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron.
Any additional questions for Mr. Nelson?
That's okay. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get the [inaudible].
Commissioners online, do you have any questions for Mr. Nelson? I do not.
I have one, if that's okay.
Commissioner Zandell, is that you trying to get in? Is there anything we can do to assist her? Please bear with us one minute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, but you've got a lot of static coming in there, Amy. Try it again, please.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay. I heard Mr. Nelson touch on the fact that, you know, essentially, I wanted to clarify that the role of what we're voting on today is not to even really talk about what their plan looks like or exit points or anything like that. That's just a drawing provided, and we're essentially approving a rezone. And if we approve a rezone, they're going to be allowed to essentially turn in whatever renderings they want with however many rows of trees or anything else like that, because a church is a permitted zone in what they're trying to do for the zoning change.
That's correct.
That is correct, Commissioner.
And then I have one other question for Ms. Schmidt. Am I allowed to vote on this item, considering there's going to be cash and repayment to the Park District?
Yes, I believe that you can.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Nelson? For the record, I am recusing myself, as I live at 750 Rainy Way, across the fence, and there would be some that might think there's a conflict there, so I'm recusing myself. Commissioner Jorgensen, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just agree with what Commissioner Olson said. I mean, we've got numerous letters about the traffic on Sixth Street, and this is probably kind of a shock to those people. They're expecting a by-level next to them, and now this is going to happen, so I guess I'd like to see some other forms of egress coming from the church. And there's also a lot of, a few emails about the number of trees for the sound barrier and stuff like that, so.
Thank you. Anyone else for comments to Mr. Nelson? The regular agenda is closed. We now move into the public hearing. Looks like we have a lot of interest here this evening. Welcome. First, I'm going to call on anyone that's going to speak in favor of this. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of A-24-32 Hope Lutheran Edition and the rezoning from A to R-1A? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Sir, please come forward. Please state your name and address.
I'm Brian Berg with Zerberg Architects, live in North Fargo, and just here to speak on behalf of the church. The planned drawing that has been exhibited up here by Mr. Nelson is the culmination of some neighborhood meetings that were had and feedback that we received. There was input that was very valuable from those meetings that was taken into consideration. Additional trees were added, and I know that the concern of screening the parking lot area and screening the church development is a concern of the neighborhood, and trees have been added on both the north and south side, and the church is certainly willing to add additional trees if the neighborhood feels that it's necessary to assist with that screening. The exit on the northeast corner there on Sixth is a connection of what will eventually be a further connection to the east, and so it's not required, as has been mentioned by any zoning ordinance or any access ordinance, but it is a convenience to be able to have some traffic go out that way. We believe that through traffic studies, we've had a traffic engineer look at this, just traffic studies in general, the majority of the traffic is going to be on Ninth, and the congestion that's anticipated there would be entirely on Wednesday evening and on Sunday morning. The rest of the time, there really wouldn't be any conflict. I'd point out that just to the south of this location and across Ninth is the elementary school, and the traffic coming in and out of that area at the beginning and end of the full day would be really similar to that. We have 400 parking spaces, but not all of those parking spaces are vacating at the same time, in terms of just the flow of traffic and when services end and when services begin, there's an overlap there, so not all of those spaces are being vacated at the same time. So we've enjoyed the interaction that we've had with the neighborhood when we've had public meetings, and we value the input of the neighbors. So Hope wants to be a good neighbor to the entire neighborhood here, and as this is a allowable use in the zoning that's being proposed, as a church is allowable use, we would ask that the council approve the rezoning and the replating of the lot as presented. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One more call for anyone that would speak in favor of the rezoning. All right, we're going to move to people that would like to speak in opposition to this. Just please raise your hand, and I'm going to go kind of work from front to back, that's all right with everyone? The gentleman, you're closest to the microphone. This one, sir. This one here. You use this microphone, please. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Thomas Mo, I live at 808 48th Avenue, and I'm opposed for probably two or three reasons. One, I am concerned about this access on Sixth down in the end of 48th. Maybe nobody knows for sure, but there's going to be congestion there. There's going to be way more traffic on 48th and Sixth, and I have two grandchildren that visit me twice a week, and we walk down that street and we walk over to that little park on 47th, and I'm not interested in, you know, nothing against the church, but I'm not interested in, you know, commercial-level traffic in a neighborhood that I moved into that was, you know, explained to me to be very family-friendly. I know we got a school down there, but popping this church into this little spot doesn't seem to make any sense. It's like we're trying to force it, especially this access on Sixth, so I don't like it for that reason. The other reason is that I think this is a terrible waste of good valuable tax base, property tax base, for the city and the county. You could put 40 homes in there and generate $400,000 a year, and I know your budget's tight and property tax pressure is coming, and if I was trying to run the city or managing property taxes and managing your budget, I would ask the Hope Lutheran to go out a half-mile west of us and get 20 acres of farmland from someone. By that, that would not take out this much property tax base out of the system and build a nice church out there. What would be wrong with that? So anyway, that's the other thing. I think it's not, whoever's approving this is not thinking, oh, maybe they are. I hope they think about the property tax impact. That would provide, that would help you balance your budget and maybe provide a little property tax relief for all of us, hopefully. And the third thing is just kind of following up what I said before. I was, my wife and I bought this house here five years ago, and we liked it, and everybody that we knew around here and the real estate agents said this was going to be a nice residential area, and we assumed, and of course, you know, we don't have any right to demand anything here, but we assumed this would be residential housing. You know, the ranch has basically been built up since we moved in, and then we assumed the rest of it would be residential, and we weren't expecting something like this that would maybe have more of a traffic impact than we'd like. So, that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mo. The gentleman next to you.
All right. Oh, sorry. Thank you. My name's Joel Morris. I live at 4735 Sixth Street West. I've been talking to a lot of my neighbors, and I think you'll find that the stories you're going to hear are about the same. We moved in, I think we picked out the lot in 2012, moved in in 13, so it was pretty much an entire farm field, save for about two houses when we moved out there. My story is about the same. We moved in there because we looked at the future plots. Sixth Street was never going to be a through street. It was going to connect off to the east, and that would go down to 52nd, and there'd be a connector from 52nd up to 47th Avenue. So that was one of our biggest things, since we were looking at expanding family. We had a young child and a second on the way. We knew that it would be all residential homes in the area, so that the traffic would all be local traffic only. As it sits right now, I've worked from home for, gosh, 10 years, 11 years. We probably see 40 cars down Sixth Street a day. With the current proposal, that's going to probably go up to 600 on a Sunday. I say that, again, we've been there for a long time. In this location, the only way you're going to go from here is either east or north. The fastest ways east and north are 47th Avenue and over. You don't go to Ninth Street and down to 52nd and over. So that's my biggest concern, so thank you, Commissioner Olson, for bringing up Sixth Street right away. I think that's probably the biggest concern of most people here, along with the proposed change. I know there was a neighborhood meeting. A lot of us were unable to attend, or like myself, I wasn't overly concerned. The original plan we got in 2022 had the church down south on 52nd Avenue. I can hand this out if anyone wants it. I've got a lot of examples of it. So going to 52nd Avenue for the church sounded like a great idea to us. It was a change to the design of the neighborhood, but 52nd, I believe, is already scheduled for a future enhancement anyway. It's going to get widened, it's going to get larger. The church would then vacate to a major road. Again, going back to this plan, there is no major roads for this church to exit to. I suppose technically they can all handle the traffic, but Ninth Street is one lane each direction. There's going to be congestion there, and that's also going to be pushing traffic east and north, again, away from Ninth. The intersection to the south is going to back up. There's currently a stop sign there, so that'll back people up, again, pushing people east as well, as they're trying to get out of the area, going through Sixth Street or 47th Avenue, which is also all residential and all kids. I guess, I don't know, I had so many things I wanted to say, and I'm just, six months of thinking of this now, I've kind of lost track of them all, but I think that's the most important ones for us, is, you know, if the church was going to be on 52nd, I think most everyone in the neighborhood thought that was a fine idea. It would be taking an open area and allowing people to move in around the church, such that they would understand the entrances and exits. You know, this plan takes people who've moved into this area with a plan of how their neighborhood was going to be, how their kids were going to be out in the area, and a church is going into that plan, contrary to what we were told, you know, when we moved in. And no plans changed. I just hope that at the very least, we can remove that Sixth Street exit or move back to the original plan, which was that church on 52nd, or to the west where the new bridge has just been completed on 52nd Avenue as well. I guess that's my comments. Thank you very much for reading all those emails. I know there's probably a few of them in there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the zoning change?
Hello, I'm Ryan Downs with 4742 Sixth Street West, and, you know, I spent a lot of time in real estate, and I know that things do change, you know, planning and zoning changes often, but I heard one time that just because you can do something doesn't mean that you should. So it doesn't make sense with this situation. You know, my primary concern is going to be safety, just like many of the people back here, too. I have three young kids. One of them is mentally and physically handicapped, can't hear, can't see cars coming, and, you know, this is going to put our family out of a home. I mean, we're going to have to move our house. I mean, it's deeply, deeply concerning that this is even being considered at this point. You know, there's a lot of churches in town that have thoroughfares that are off of 32nd Avenue, that are off of Cheyenne Street, and to put this off of Ninth and then even into Sixth, it's just, it doesn't make sense. And so, you know, those are the primary concerns. I mean, kids are biking to school, and if you have traffic coming through on a Wednesday or even on a Sunday, if they're going to the playground, you know, those kids are not accustomed to seeing all these cars come through. Even today, I would say it's still congested. You know, you've got kids biking through, and, you know, it's just going to be a difference of culture, and they're going to have to adjust to that if this comes through. So, I mean, a lot of these kids are just accustomed to that right now, and that's just the sense of community that's in this neighborhood. Yeah, and the biggest thing, too, is just these roads are not capable of handling traffic. I would encourage any of you to drive down Sixth Street, Ninth Street, get a feel for it. I mean, if you look at Sixth Street, you've got even cars parked on the side of the street. If you're exiting out on Sixth Street, you're going to be weaving through traffic. Traffic's going to be coming in, traffic's going to be going out. It's just not even possible unless you make that a wider road, and that's not possible either, because there's homes already in that place. So, yeah, I just, I'm not sure how it could even physically happen, even if it did go into play, so those are my comments. Thanks for listening to them.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to speak against this? Please, please come forward. Good evening and welcome. Thank you. Greg Kaiser.
Greg Kaiser, seven twenty-nine Forty-Eighth Avenue West. One of my properties is butted up against the church, but that's not my issue. So if you look at the parking lot, it's the same size as the Prairie Heights parking lot. And my issue with that is, if you think about churches that have parking lots that size, they're always against a four-lane road. Hope Lutheran Church on Twenty-Fifth Avenue South, Nativity on University, Prairie Heights on Thirty-second, Triumph on Cheyenne, all of them with parking lots this size have access from a four-lane road. As you can see, there's no four-lane road here. There's no plan to build a four-lane road. There, there's no room to build a four-lane road. So my issue would be for the children that live there and use those streets and basketballs rolling into the streets and, you know, people just biking in the streets. It's just gonna be dangerous. If you think about churches this size, they should be on main roads. Like the gentleman said, farmland just west of us would be a great place. Fifty-second Avenue would be a great place, not here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the zoning change? Please come forward. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Mike Kublin. I'm forty-seven nineteen Sixth Street West. I don't know if it brought your attention, but Ninth Street there, it's a one-way, and then there's a subdivision by a curb, right? So cars can only go to the north out of the parking lot or into the parking lot there. Sixth Street's gonna get hammered with traffic no matter what. It's a quiet area, lots of small kids, and you really gotta take that into consideration when you're making your decision. I really appreciate that. So I gotta say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the zoning change? Has there anyone come into the room that would like to speak in favor of this? Any additional comments in favor of the zoning change? Okay? And we're gonna go back to the opposition again that are against the zoning change. Anyone else? This is the last call. Please. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, I'm Jackie Morris. I live at forty-seven thirty-five Sixth Street, right on that road, and I'm really concerned about all the traffic. And they keep bringing up, well, it's only Wednesdays and Sundays. It's not only Wednesdays and Sundays. There are funerals, there are weddings, there are concerts, there are picnics that they plan. Every day of the week, there's gonna be added traffic, and people are going to come down Sixth Street because the parking lot is at the back. It's not facing Ninth, where they keep saying, oh, it's gonna be Ninth. Well, then put the parking lot on Ninth Street. Why is the back of the church on Ninth, and the parking lot is in the middle of all the houses where that exit is? No one's going to go on a little narrow road all the way around the church when the exit's right on Sixth. And it's not just Wednesdays and Sundays. Added traffic throughout the week. Thank you.
Thank you. One more call. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone? Seeing no more discussion in favor or against, the public hearing is closed. Now move back into the regular agenda. Commissioners, what's before us this evening is the first reading of eight twenty-four dash thirty-two Hope Lutheran Edition, a request for a subdivision and rezoning from A to R dash one A. Mr. Anderson.
I have a question for clarification from Mr. Nelson. That north exit on the west side, does that go into that Mulberry Lane? Does that connect up with that, or is that to the north or south of that intersection?
The access points on Ninth Street would both align with those local streets on the west side of Ninth Street, so it would be in alignment with Mulberry Lane.
Okay. And then I guess, if I can, just, I really struggle with the Sixth Street, looking at the, looking at the streets there. I've driven down them, and just looking at the pictures I'm seeing, I see that it's really narrow. So it's, I struggle with this as presented. I would be in favor if we had a condition on this to remove the Sixth Street exit or egress right now, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Nelson, being we have him at the podium? Commissioner Olson.
The drawing that you've got with the trees and the parking lot and that one right there, that's just a conceptual, that that could be changed, where like the one person said, put the parking lot right next to the street, put the church in the back?
Yep.
That could all be changed?
Yep, and that's a good point to emphasize here, is that what's in front of the commission tonight is not the site plan. What's in front of the commission is the requested rezone and the subdivision plat. And so they are showing, you know, conceptual site plan here, but there would be nothing in the approval tonight that would lock them into this specific design.
Commissioner Anderson.
Would we have any say in any future meetings about the site plan, about design like this, if they were to move forward with this and say this were to get approved as is doing the actions being asked of us tonight? Would that, would we have any other opportunity to change that if we had concerns?
That's a good question, too. So if the proposal were approved as currently proposed, so that would be the approved rezoning to R dash one A, as well as the approved subdivision plat, that would provide all the development entitlements that would be necessary for them to legally develop a church on this property. So they would be legally entitled to apply for a building permit, and so long as the site plan met all applicable development standards, all building codes, all fire codes, all zoning codes, it would be an administrative review of the building permit by staff, and so long as they met all of the applicable requirements, they'd be entitled to approval of that building permit and construction. So there would be no additional public hearing, no additional opportunity for city commission review, unless they were to require some other type of development entitlement that, you know, hasn't been discovered yet, or something like an additional access point or something.
So for clarification, Mr. Nelson, there's two items before us then? Rezoning and the plot?
Yep, so there's two, you know, the application includes two different entitlements. One is the rezoning, and the other is the subdivision plat. But because the rezoning requires two readings of the ordinance, we don't typically ask for final approval of the plat until we ask for final approval of that second reading of the ordinance.
All right, very good. We have one issue before us this evening, and that is the rezoning.
Yeah, we present it all as one package, but technically speaking, yes, the only issue tonight that we're asking for approval for tonight is the rezoning, first reading of the rezoning.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Olson.
So to build on what Commissioner Anderson said about the plan, conceptual plan, if it would get approved tonight to rezone this, the city commission will have no other say on how the parking lot or anything like that would be done. Could we make, if we wanted to, make that a condition?
Yep, so there's one caveat there, is that there is a second reading of the rezone ordinance and then the subdivision approval. So there is an additional meeting at which place and time the city commission can, you know, weigh in and decide on this matter. However, once that's, once the second reading of the rezoning is approved and once the final plat is approved, there would be no additional review by the city commission required, correct?
Required, but could we require it? More like what Commissioner Anderson was leaning towards. Could we require that it comes back to us before the staff approves a building permit?
The issue before us, though, is the rezoning. So I'm gonna defer to Mr. Schmidt, our legal counsel.
Sure, so tonight is just the first reading of the zoning ordinance, so that's the only thing you're considering. There'll be a second meeting where there's the second reading, as well as the consideration of the subdivision agreement. So if there are certain conditions you wanna put on, we can put them into the subdivision agreement, which is not being approved at this meeting, it'll be approved at the next meeting.
Correct.
Commissioner Anderson.
One more question. Do we know when that next meeting, when the second reading and the subdivision agreement would be brought? Do we know what meeting that would be? Would that be the next meeting? Would it be a month away?
So if the first reading is approved tonight, we would have that second reading at the very next meeting, which would be the August fourth city commission meeting.
Great.
Any additional questions for Mr. Nelson? This is an actionable item, commissioners. Is there a motion to?
I'll make the motion so we can move on. I'll move to approve the first reading.
We have a motion to approve the first reading of rezoning from A to R dash one A. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Just one question. Do we still have the other two online? Because if you, if we don't, then...
Commissioner?
I'm here.
Okay. Mr. Jorgensen, are you still there?
Present self, yep.
Good, all right. So we're good, we're good. So we have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of eight twenty-four dash thirty-two Hope Lutheran Edition for rezoning from agriculture to residential dash one A. Is there any further discussion?
I just, yeah, I'm, thank you, Commissioner Olson, oh, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Olson and Commissioner Anderson, for bringing that up, that we still can deny the plan at the next reading.
Is there any further discussion? All commissioners in favor of the rezoning, please signify by saying aye.
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 Commissioner?
Didn't hear the second. That was an aye.
Okay, the records show that's a four-o vote, and a reminder that I recuse myself from this issue. Motion passes. Item number three is arranged use agreement with the Red River Regional Marksmanship Center. Pete Nielsen, Chief of Police. Good evening, Chief, and welcome.
Good evening, Commission President Dardis, fellow commissioners. I stand before you tonight with a request for the West Fargo Commission to approve a proposed agreement with the Red River Regional Marksmanship Center. This time, we're currently using the Fargo Regional Training Center in Fargo. We've been using that for the last twenty-five years. Our current contract is coming to an end December thirty-first, 2025, and I'm asking tonight for the approval to move to the West Fargo-owned, West Fargo-based Red River Regional Marksmanship Center. This would give the police department twenty-four-hour access to this facility, which includes the indoor shooting range, a training room, and the storage for the equipment that would be needed there. Partnering with this facility, which is located here in West Fargo, would help reduce some of the costs that we currently are pushing forward with the Fargo Regional Training Center, and it would help with the overtime rates as well with the officers, as this would be in our city, and we'd be able to have our officers shoot on different shifts, which, again, would save on overtime. The proposed agreement would be effective from January first, 2026, until December thirty-first, 2034, with a fixed amount annual fee of nine thousand dollars. Currently, we are paying twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars, and that was from, that was a seventeen percent percentage of the operational costs from the Fargo Regional Training Center. And just to remind you, that contract was negotiated back in 2000. So we expect that contract to rise, rise to the point where it may possibly even double. So we did our little bit of research earlier this year, and we found that this to be the best solution, not only save money, but to also save the overtime for our officers as well, and to support the local business here in West Fargo. With that information, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners, any questions of the chief?
A motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jorgensen. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Red River Regional Marksmanship Center for our police department to use as for their shooting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Chief. You have a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Item number four. We're looking for a presentation for approval of the 2026 utility rate increases. Mr. Matt Anvik, Director of Public Works. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. A few, about two meetings ago, I brought forward the proposed utility rates for 2026. Kinda went over them now, gave everybody time to kinda look at them. Now we're bringing this back forward for approval tonight. As I stated before, in 2024, we kinda brought a five-year utility rate plan before you to kinda just show where we needed to be, you know, in the future for our funding and just kind of a plan for our rates. Just the 2025 rate was approved last year with the intention of bringing back during the budget cycle this year and to get the approval for 2026. This has kinda been, kinda what we're gonna call it, year two of a catch-up. We hadn't had a lot of increases, or we've had zero increases really since 2020. This is to try and get us to that kinda catch-up place, to get us back on track with our rates. And then from here on out, that, those increases will be a lot less moving forward. Just kinda touch on it a little bit quickly here on some of these increases for water. It's more or less just to support, you know, infrastructure replacement projects, where we can actually fund some of that through our rates instead of having to use CIP funds to do some of that. And it's kinda stabilizing our reserves over the next, we're finishing the meter project, completing that this year. So we're just kinda finalizing what funds that we need to pay for the remaining meters that we have, and what that's gonna do to our reserves. Plus, we earmarked some dollars from the water fund to fund some of our public works expansion as well. And then we're also looking at projected rate increases from Fargo in twenty-seven and twenty-nine, and that's kinda a lot of what's driving our rates where we're at now is just the unknown in twenty-seven and twenty-nine and what that rate will be. We had one in twenty-five, which that was a substantial increase. So trying to forecast what that might be, we're still kinda, kinda guessing on where we're gonna be there. Sewer's a lot the same, is just to strengthen those reserves. We are looking at, you know, increasing that full capacity to send all of our wastewater to Fargo. Right now, we're doing a little bit of a holding pattern right now. We're just kinda waiting for those reserves and rates to catch up so we can send all that, or all the flow to Fargo. We're also trying to work with some of the I and I issues we have to try and use some of the remaining three lagoons we have, to just use that as kinda stabilizing ponds right now, instead of, if we have a high water event, instead of basically sending everything to Fargo and getting charged for that rainwater, we're gonna use our ponds to try and be smart with how we're using, you know, the dollars that we're using to send to Fargo. And then, just the same way as water, we're trying to get, you know, a nice balance in there to be able to fund some infrastructure projects as well. Sanitation, we're looking at a rate increase from Fargo coming in 2026 for the landfill. It goes from fifty-one dollars a ton to fifty-six dollars a ton, or fifty-seven dollars a ton, actually. So it is a six-dollar increase per ton that we're kinda, hadn't we started planning for some sort of increase here a few years ago, and that's part of that rate plan that we brought forward last year, kinda forecasted a little bit of that coming in. We're also looking at, you know, expanding transfer station and landfill capacities in the future as the city grows, and looking at long-term waste disposal strategies over the next ten to fifteen years, to seeing what happens with the Fargo landfill and if we were gonna need a... if we were going to need a transfer station to Holloway, some of our MSW, or, you know, how we might handle that in the future, and if we can get a plan and be able to fund that as well. Forestry, just continue to strengthen reserves and stabilize that long-term. Kind of capital purchases, we have, it's a smaller budget, and so, you know, as you approved earlier this year, you approved that, that bucket truck that we had, were able to purchase now is partly because we had that money available in the reserves to do so. And also in twenty-five, that rate increase marked the initial step of a, kind of a phased approach of taking over the boulevard trees. We are shooting for 2029 to make sure that we have full staffing and equipment to be able to take over all the twenty-one thousand trees. Current staffing that we do have, we hired two new arborists this year, so we do have four on staff. They are taking a lot more of the trimming and the pruning of the boulevard trees. We just don't have enough time with the staff we have to be able to take all of them at this time. And this kind of five-year plan will, will get us to that point, and we're shooting for that to be ahead of that emerald ash borer before we start seeing, hopefully before we start seeing too many dead trees around town. Moving into the, just the proposed rates, we've showed this, this slide before, but just going up for like a three quarter inch meters, seven eighty-four, eight dollars for the tier one water usage. The big change from last year to this year is the base rate for sewer, which is going up from, I believe, twelve eighty-three to nineteen dollars, and that is just because we're playing around with, you know, of ways to keep the flow charge or flow rate lower, and that base rate would actually cover some of our stormwater operations as we move forward. As I mentioned before, the INI is kind of a, a big issue that we have been dealing with. That base rate will help deal with some of the rehab for the sanitary, or the storm lifts that we have to be able to, you know, handle that kind of INI, and then also do some INI strategies to try and lower that, that number of INI that we have as well. We're kind of a little bit lower than we had projected last year in sanitation, at twenty-five ninety for a sixty-four gallon cart, and then twenty-eight seventy, or twenty-nine seventy, sorry, for a ninety-six gallon cart. Forestry continues on that increase, lower than last year, but a fifty cent increase this year per month. Just an example of what a residential utility rate, or build comparison from last year to this year, it's a, for six thousand gallon on average is a little over fourteen dollar increase per month, and four thousand gallons is twelve forty-seven per month. And that's what we're kind of looking at, I guess, is what we're saying. This is the year two of that catch-up. As we start going in the future, you start going down instead of double-digit increases per month, you know, if we continue on this path, then we're down to about a seven dollar increase next year for six thousand gallons, six dollars and five dollars and so on. So we are starting to see those more manageable and increases instead of the double-digit increases for those residents. So now we can get back to very manageable ones per year. And then with, I guess we've showed with this model that we're using as forecasting this, but then bringing it back every year, we're able to see what's going on and can adjust. And I think that really works going forward, especially when we're getting these increases from Fargo. Trying to forecast forward and see what those increases could be, really will push forward after twenty-seven on our increases. If that increase from Fargo is coming in less than we're predicting, we will be able to lower those, the increases, because it'll just, I guess, what we're factoring for our budgets going forward. And if that is higher, then we might have to adjust a little bit in there as well. So also, you'll see at the end of this, in the packet was our resolution for setting the rate charges. I know we had that at a separate meeting last year. This year, it's the second year of knowing what we're doing now. We're just go ahead and add that all, so we have it all done at one time, so it doesn't look confusing like we're approving the rates twice. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions from Mr. Anvik?
Make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Zundell, seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the 2026 utility rate increases as presented by Mr. Anvik, Director of Public Works. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Records show it's a four to one vote. You have approval. Thank you. Item number five is the first reading, reading of ordinance twelve sixty, legislative updates. We call on Katie Schmidt, City Attorney for the City of West Fargo.
Thank you, Commissioner President and Commissioners. This is the first reading of ordinance changes resulting from statutory changes made by the legislature during this past session. I ask that you approve this first reading, and I am available for any questions.
Any questions, Commissioners? Ms. Schmidt?
Move to her first reading.
We have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twelve sixty. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jorgensen, seconds. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number six is the second reading of ordinance twelve fifty-nine, food establishments. Again, we call on Katie Schmidt, City Attorney for the City of West Fargo. Ms. Schmidt?
Thank you, Commissioner President and Commissioners. This is the second reading of this ordinance. If you recall, Mr. Grant Larson from Fargo Cass Public Health was here at the past meeting for the first reading. No changes have been made since that presentation. I ask that you adopt this ordinance, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Schmidt?
Move to approve second reading.
Commissioner Anderson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zundell, seconds. We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of ordinance twelve fifty-nine regarding food establishments, as presented by Ms. Schmidt, City Attorney. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item number seven is a review of the 2026 preliminary budget. We call on Dustin Scott, City Administrator for the City of West Fargo. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Commission President Dardis and Commissioners. It is my absolute pleasure to bring before you our first draft of the preliminary budget for 2026. And right off the bat, I want to hit you with the good news. I'm absolutely honored and humbled to work with such dedicated staff, beautiful minds. They've been working very hard these past few months to bring forward a very responsible budget. And again, with great pleasure, I, I announce that we are proposing a balanced budget for 2026, no deficit and no use of reserves. It's been a collaborative effort to address the challenges of a dynamic market, as well as state and federal changes that are limiting our revenue sources. Our Commissioners have been very actively engaged. We continue to go back and forth with answering questions, gathering your feedback, and all of your directives will be incorporated as we move forward in the budget process. I look forward to continuing to refine the budget and improving it through completion. So with that, let me get into some of the detail here, starting with our expenditures. Apologize for the small font, but on the left side of the screen here is our general fund. That's where our police fire, all of our administrative departments are all located within our general fund. On the right-hand side, you'll see a summary of our utility funds. Those are the funds that Mr. Anvik was just speaking about. And then, other levied funds, such as our airport and library. Starting with the general fund, we're proposing, at this point, a two-point-seven-four percent increase from 2025. I'll take a time here to just remind everyone that this is still a first draft of our preliminary budget. There is a lot of work to do. There are a lot of outstanding questions and feedback that we are still working through with, with Commissioners. So while we are showing detail here, I just caution that this is certainly going to change over the course of the next few weeks as we complete our budget process. In our utility funds, in total, an increase of four-point-eight-nine percent. Some of that comes from our purchasing of water from the City of Fargo, as well as delivering our, our sewer to the City of Fargo. Airport, there's a significant increase there, eighteen percent. That is to account for a new feeling system that they've budgeted for. That also comes with additional revenues, and you'll see later on, they are also going to be a balanced budget. So holistically, all major funds combined, we are looking at about a three-and-a-half percent increase from twenty-five to twenty-six. And again, as the notes indicate there, all of our expenditures are subject to change pending final feedback. I will also note that this afternoon, our Communications Department did put our presentation that we're walking through tonight on our website, as well as all of the departmental budget detail. So each departmental budget that makes up these total numbers, that is available on our website to go through all of the line items that, that accumulate to these totals. So any questions on this summary of our expenditures before I move on?
Questions, Commissioners? Please continue.
As I mentioned, again, very proud of the hard work our staff has done. We've been outlining a budget timeline really since, communicating that to the public since April. We had a, a budget, call it a budget one-on-one meeting at the library in April. We outlined that towards the end of May and early June, we would have feedback sessions with Commissioners. And so, really, I wanted to walk through some of the, the major items that have changed since we had that initial feedback review sessions towards the end of May. Number one, we have removed all new FTE requests that were originally submitted from all of our departments. This is across the city. This includes our utility funds and our general funds. All of the staffing requests have been removed to the tune of about a one-point-two-five million dollar reduction from what you saw back in May. We'll continue to monitor the impacts to these services, the strain on our existing staff that this will require, and evaluate long-term financial impacts to ensure that we have sustainable staffing levels, and that we can support additional staff moving forward. We also need to balance the increasing demands of a growing city. So again, all of these things will, will be monitored through the course of, of the upcoming year, and we will be very strategic in how we move forward into future budgets. Equipment and vehicles, major purchases, about a one-point-seven million dollar reduction from, again, what you saw back in May. We're challenging our staff to make do with what we currently have available. And again, we will definitely continue to monitor our, our needs over the course of the next year. This could present some additional maintenance costs and/or emergency repairs or replacements, but we will address those as they come. And then roughly a half a million dollars worth of miscellaneous items, you know, smaller categories, things like employee development, or some technology requests, some of the minor items that, again, are provided in our departmental budget detail. So really, a total of three-and-a-half million dollars of reduction from the draft that Commissioners reviewed at the end of May, that first part of June. We're going to be very strategic in communicating our efforts, our challenges and successes with our local and state officials, to demonstrate the impact of the legislative changes that have come forward. But again, very proud to, to be presenting tonight a balanced budget. As far as staffing expenditures, that previous slide, I, I told you that there were roughly one-point-two-five million dollars in reduction to new staffing requests. I thought it prudent to at least identify the departments that had submitted those requests, just for full disclosure. All in all, twelve, twelve new requests have been removed. COLA, on June sixteenth, when I was before you, we did acknowledge that we were starting with a two-and-a-half percent COLA. As of last week, the Midwest CPI is set at about two-point-seven percent. So I, I feel like we're in line there, and we're going to continue to monitor what our, our city and county peers are doing as they move forward in their budget process. For sake of context, one percent of COLA in our general fund is equivalent to roughly two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, just to give the Commission some, some idea of, of the impact with COLA. And as in previous years, we don't have final determination on, on health benefit increases until typically after the preliminary budget is approved. And to be conservative, we use a ten percent increase to establish our, our expenditure budget baseline. So any questions before we move on into the revenues? Okay. Revenue, revenue forecasting. Some of this information is a repeat of what we brought forward back in June. It's that, again, it's very crucial to understand the challenges that come forward with not only trying to forecast our expenditures eighteen months in advance, but also trying to forecast revenues. I won't belabor all of this, but I do want to point out property taxes with the legislative change, that is our only revenue source that really is quite easy to forecast. That is really going to stay consistent and constant as we move forward the budget process. All in all, in our general fund, property taxes make up approximately forty-six percent of our total revenues into the general fund. So as I mentioned, there's been some challenges with the state and federal impacts. Again, this is a very similar slide to what we showed back in June. And we've, we've seen changes in, of course, how we bring in our property tax revenue. There's also been some changes with state and federal aid, all worth noting as we work through this budget process. How are we calculating our property taxes? I'll say it is a bit more complicated than what we've shown here on the slide, but in general, we are taking the 2025 property tax revenue, applying the three percent increase. We also get to recognize new growth. Along with new growth are things like changes in, in TIF districts. If, for example, the TIF district that just closed out for Charleswood, that has an impact. That, that gets factored into these numbers. So you take those, you add that on to twenty-five, it puts us at about twenty-two-point-seven million dollars. And then there is a discount. The state does allow for a five percent discount for all property owners if they pay their property taxes early. So we do factor about eighty-five percent of our taxpayers pay their taxes early and receive that five percent discount. So that equates to about nine-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars of discount. So we apply that to our bottom line, and our net total of property tax revenue is going to be about twenty-one-point-eight million dollars. One of the big changes with this new property tax law is that the Commission really does not have the ability to even talk in terms of a potential change in mill levy. You know, we're, we're focusing on the total dollar amounts, not the amount of mills that are allocated out between funds and/or collected by the taxpayers. So again, just want to remind the Commission that there is no discussion on increasing mills to generate additional revenue. So again, that could have an effect on, on funding future city services, facilities, equipment, et cetera. I'll also take this opportunity to I'll also take this opportunity to put a heads up that unlike in previous years, the county will not be sending out an estimated property tax statement. That is another change within this legislation that took place. And so while they will send out information regarding hearings and so on and so forth, it will not be a traditional estimated property tax statement that we've seen in the past. So before I move on, any questions on how we are calculating our property taxes?
Commissioners, any questions? Please continue.
This slide is taken from our 2025 equalization report. Really just demonstrates where do all of the property taxes go between all of the public entities. You can see here, the school district receives the majority of them, followed by the city, the county, the park district, and then some miscellaneous agencies. Again, just helping residents understand where their money is going. So as I mentioned, the property tax revenue is really only 46%. So where does all the other revenue come from? And it is an assortment of sources, things like the state aid, building permit fees, plating fees, a whole list of sources that come into the general fund. Ultimately, we are, at this day, forecasting $41.393 million in overall general fund revenue for 2026. The screen here, on the left side of the screen, is a table that really correlates to a number. It's on the, the number on the right side, it's called transfers in. It's $7.1 million. On the far right side of the right-side table, about a third of the way from the bottom, that $7.1 million is tabulated on this table here on the left side. These are what are called transfers to the general fund. So for example, our public safety sales tax comes into a certain fund. It is transferred then into the general fund to cover our public safety operational costs, police and fire. There are other examples, economic development sales tax, that comes in to cover our economic development department, as well as some other economic development programs, so on and so forth. All in all, there's about seven point, near, just shy of $7.2 million worth of transfers from other funds into the general fund. On the right side, our utility funds, and again, Matt covered this in a previous item tonight. Our budgets so far have been based on those potential utility rate adjustments, which as of tonight have been approved, so we will lock those in as we move forward with the budget process. So where does that land us? Like I said at the beginning, we are balanced. So we are at a net position of zero dollars in all of our major funds, with the exception of our utilities, general fund, library, airport, all at zero. Again, we understand that we are still working through the budget. We are still receiving feedback and expect that there will be changes made throughout the course of this budget process. But as we make those changes, we will continue to work towards a balanced budget moving forward. Utility funds, there is a surplus across all of our utility funds that is allowable by state law and is intended as part of our strategic plan to grow reserves for our infrastructure needs and other operational needs within those utility programs. So my next couple of slides are going to change the subject here a little bit, but before I do that, any questions on where we are at with our budget so far?
Questions, commissioner? Please continue.
Okay. So June 16th, there was a directive from the commission to take a look at longevity pay. The city commission directed staff to explore longevity pay to recognize long-term service and demonstrate the city's commitment to valuing experience and loyalty. The directive aims to retain experienced staff, preserve institutional knowledge, minimize costs of turnover, invest in loyalty beyond our standard compensation, and stay competitive and progressive. While we haven't done an extensive dive into all of the potentials of a longevity pay policy, we did outline some options, starting with eligibility requirements, proposing a minimum of 10 years of continuous service. You have to have reached the maximum salary range. And what that means for us in our current salary structure is there are no more eligible steps to have full-time status. So any temporary or seasonal part-time employees are not eligible, and you have to have satisfactory job performance. And currently, we do have a quarterly and annual review system in place. The recommission structure, potentially using a tiered model where the value would be based on service milestones. So for example, a certain value placed for those that are between 10 and 15 years of service, between 15 and 20, then going a little higher, so on and so forth, until you've reached 25 years, and that would potentially be the end of a milestone. There are options to use a flat rate, so X dollars per month or per year for each one of those tiers. We could include as salary or keep it as a separate distribution. Keeping it separate would exclude it from things like retirement and other benefits. As far as pay scale or pay schedule options, again, you could have something included in the regular paychecks or monthly, annually. I guess for us, annually would probably be the easiest to administrate, but these are all options to consider moving forward. And so tonight, I'm really looking to get some feedback and direction on what should our next steps be. Do we continue gathering information and feedback on policy options, potentially drafting a policy for commissioner review? And if so, do we want to do something before or after the budget process? So again, just really looking for some direction on what the commission would like staff to look into next. So before you offer those, any feedback or suggestions, any questions I can answer first?
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Olson?
Let's just say it got approved before the preliminary budget is approved, then you'd have to go back and re-figure everything because now it would not be a balanced budget, right?
Thank you, Commissioner Olson, yes. If something did get approved, there, of course, would be an expense that would come with that. We would go back and evaluate all of those revenue sources and aim to make adjustments where we can to balance the budget. Now, there would be other options the commission could consider. That could be a directive to have a one-time use of reserves or, you know, other funding options would certainly be available to the commission, but again, I would suggest that, yes, we would have to go back and repurpose our revenue forecasting to balance the budget.
So that leads me to the next question is if we approve this after the preliminary budget, our only really source of revenue would be from our reserves?
Well, the commission could consider a budget amendment. And so we do budget amendments most often to amend our expenditures. The commission could amend the budget to modify a revenue forecast. And for example, I'll use our franchise fees, which we collect fees for gas consumption, electrical consumption. As we all know, our winters vary quite a bit. So when we put those forecasts together, we look at historical data. Unfortunately, we don't have a weatherman that can tell us what the following year is going to be, but we could go back to a revenue source like that and potentially amend it. Those, again, would be options that commission could consider. Otherwise, yes, always have the option to use reserves. I don't know that there's any outside funding sources that are available for something like this, you know, grants, so on and so forth, but I would just, you know, say that there would be options available to the commission.
The, your sales tax collections, we're forecasting a very conservative growth of 3%. And historical data would tell us that we're growing faster than a 3% growth on sales tax. So that, you know, from my perspective and having met with, since May, with Mr. Scott on the budget every week, you know, that's one that would jump forward to me, is that's a very, very conservative growth pattern of 3%. So there are avenues that we can choose. Obviously, the commission will decide that. Any other questions, Mr. Scott? Please continue if you have anything else.
Okay, so moving on.
So let's, being we're on the longevity pay, is it a general consensus of the commission that we have staff continue to work on this and bring forward a proposal?
Absolutely.
Mr. Jorgensen's a yes? Mr. Zondell?
Yes.
Uh, yeah. I would just say my preference is I don't think this should be a use of reserves function. And I think I would really like to see something that accounts for, call it maybe five years, if everybody stayed the same and we didn't lose anybody, that would move into it, because I think this decision is more than a one-time consideration of what it's going to cost. So that would be my preference as far as feedback. I'm not at all in support of using reserves, and I just want to make sure that we can still stay within a balanced budget if we're looking to do something this year.
Thank you, commissioner. Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, continue, yeah.
Commissioner Anderson?
I'm all for looking at it. I don't know that I'm entirely thrilled about revisiting any kind of revenue forecasts. I'd like to maybe try and control what we can control or work with what we can control or have more control over, rather. So that would be my view. I'm always interested in getting more info and seeing what it looks like.
Please continue.
Very good. Thank you. So our next steps, like I've mentioned, we're going to continue to work with commissioners and gather all the feedback you have and respond to your questions and requests for additional information. Our budget documents that you're seeing tonight are available on our website underneath the budget page. Point out that based on our changes to century code, cities must provide a budget hearing date and time to the county, but we no longer are required to submit a preliminary budget to the county. That said, we still need to approve and adopt a preliminary budget, which will then be based, or be the basis for a public hearing. And that public hearing needs to be scheduled between September 7th and October 7th. So did want to point out that while we don't have to submit a preliminary budget to the county, we will need to approve or adopt one and hold a public hearing on that preliminary budget. And we have to do that prior to August 10th. So following tonight's meeting, again, we will make any adjustments necessary and propose to come back on August 4th for a request to approve or adopt the preliminary budget and schedule that public hearing. So any questions on those next steps?
Any questions? Please continue.
So again, we've shown this timeline a few times so far this year. I'll breeze past that. I do want to point out the September 8th and September 22nd meeting, that is pending the next agenda item here, where commission has to make a motion to reschedule regular commission meetings. So again, thank all of our department heads, thank our budget team, Nick and Willie. It's their first, their first goal at the budget, and they've done a tremendous job at putting everything together and can't be prouder of our leadership team, so. With that, any other questions I can answer?
Questions for Mr. Scott?
Not really a question.
Please continue.
Just for transparency, I will be in Denver with the fire department on August 4th. So if we can't make a quorum, you know, it's August 10th is your date? That's a Sunday. So you'd have to, would we have enough time to?
Yep, and the state.
Have a special meeting?
State law does recognize Sundays as being excusable, so I believe this year, because it falls on a Sunday, we have until the 11th.
Okay. Just want to let you know that I'll be in Denver with the fire department on the 4th, so if we can't make a quorum that day, we may have to reschedule.
Right. So worst-case scenario, if we did convene on, say, August 11th, I would certainly ask that we do it in the morning to give our finance team the time to compile the necessary documents and send them over to the county prior to close a business.
I could zoom in or team in or whatever you want to call it. I think I should be there in time for the meeting if necessary.
Very good. That's all I have for you on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. As I mentioned earlier, Mr. Scott and I have been meeting since May on the budget, and I too would like to extend my thank you to Nick Lee and Willie Galindo for their work, along with Dustin Scott, and all department heads. This is a, an interesting process this year with the legislative action that took place with the 3% caps. And that wasn't, that wasn't very difficult to identify, what that, the 3% cap would mean for the city. What the challenge was is that with some of the other legislative action that took place was forecasting revenues. That's as tough a job as I think I've ever done in finance when we were looking at that. And because the Highway Trust Fund and the Prairie Dog Money and all those things had dramatic changes that took place during the legislative process and how the buckets will fill or how that money might be distributed. So the hard work that they did in identifying expenditures, FTEs, all of that type of thing is one thing. But to you, Mr. Scott, and your finance team, your work that you had to do on really going through historical data, on what those, our revenues might be, as you can see, if you go through the line item of revenues, there had been some historical data that had probably not been as considered as readily as we had because of a lack of consistency in finance. But if you look at some of the permitting revenues, you look at some of the different things like that, they were overstated. So again, to Nick Lee, Willie Galindo, and Mr. Scott, the revenue side of this was the tough side, the really tough stuff, in my opinion. Department heads might differ for what some of the asks that we did of them to hold back on some of their major purchases, on their FTEs and stuff like that. It is well distributed throughout the city. We're going to be respectful of the legislative action that was taking place. We're grateful for property tax reform that the legislature brought forward. That's a good thing. That's a good thing at any level of whatever jurisdiction you are, because we were hearing about that. We've had, you know, statewide initiatives trying to force different types of things. So that being said, your team has done a great job. I'm very pleased with it. We got some fine tuning to do. To the commissioners, I've seen a list of some of the questions that Commissioner Jorgensen, Commissioner Zondell, Commissioner Olson, and Commissioner Anderson have been forwarding. Believe me, your commission is fully engaged on even remaining expenditures. I don't know if they're dealing so much with the revenue sides, but that's something that Dustin and I are, we carry, we carry kind of that on our shoulders, along with Mr. Galindo and Mr. Lee. So they've worked hard to get us to this point, and we're grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business is item number eight. Obviously, we have a holiday on September, so we need to move the first Monday's meeting. And I will take. And I will take recommendations from the commissioners. One recommendation would be that we move it from the 8th and the 22nd. So we're still at the, we're, we're at the second week and third week. Is that all right?
Second and fourth?
Second and fourth.
First would be the first.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Or we could go September 2nd if you prefer.
If, by going, by going from the first to the eighth, what does that do to paying bills for the three week?
Payables and all that.
Three week thing.
What's your recommendation, Mr. Scott?
Thank you, commissioners. Yeah, so there's, there's a couple of complications to identify here. As Commissioner Olson mentioned, there is always a complication in delaying our, our bills. And that's going to happen whether it's, whether we move it from, unless we schedule some extra meetings here, it'll take place whether it's at the front end of the month or the back end. And I'll, I'll walk through a couple of the other points of consideration as, as you decide what, what days to reschedule to. So first being our budget, as we mentioned, we have to have a budget hearing between September 7th and October 7th. We can have it before, we can have it after, so that hearing has to fall on that window. So really, we have just a few opportunities. After the budget hearing, we also intended to bring a draft of the final budget prior to approving it. So keeping that in mind, this first option here, oh, I'm sorry, there is also another hearing that we have to consider. The special assessment commission recently reviewed four improvement districts. They've established those assessments, and the next step in the process is for the city commission to hold a public hearing. It's really, it's a, it's a hearing for objections. It's kind of an appeal process, if you will. So residents that are in those districts can come and appeal their assessments to the commission. That hearing was scheduled for September 15th. So that adds a bit of a, or at least that adds something to consider here. So with option one, if we moved the regular meetings to September 8th and September 22nd, I would ask that we schedule a special meeting specifically for those assessment projects. Now that would, or that could be the only item on that meeting. The commission could also choose to put one or, or more other items there, but the intent would be to just focus on the special assessments. So option two here, we could simply just reschedule the September 1st meeting to September 2nd, keep the September 5th meeting. Now that would mean that we would, we would still have that special assessment process, that hearing. And we would most likely want to schedule our budget hearing on September 15th. Now again, we could consider a separate meeting for that, special, special meetings just for the preliminary budget. But the further out we get into September starts to truncate our ability to have additional budget review meetings in front of the commission. So I did put a note down here that we would, we could consider a special meeting on September 22nd or September 29th to review a draft of the final budget, should we go with this option. Now maybe our final budget or our preliminary budget will be far enough along and there's really not much to change, so maybe that isn't as much of an issue. However, then that will bring us back to Commissioner Olson's concern of bills. If we meet on the 15th, our next meeting is not until October 6th. That is another significant gap in processing our accounts payable. My recommendation would be to go with option one, but it puts the burden on the commission to meet three Mondays in a row.
In August though, just looking at it, we don't meet until, we meet on the 18th, right? The 4th and the 18th. So there would be three weeks between the 18th and the 8th. You got, you got to both ends. No matter which way we go, we've got three weeks, both ends.
We have both ends unless.
To avoid any penalties on making payments and things like that, if, if we had to hold a, a teams meeting just to pay the bills, would that be an option to do to help out finance so that doesn't get caught one way, on either, either option that we choose?
Yes, and, and those are certainly options that could be considered here into the future as well. So we don't have to make those decisions necessarily right now, but we do need to look to, to schedule, reschedule our September meetings. Now, we also don't have to do that right this minute either. We could take some consideration and, and address this on August 4th. But the sooner we can do it, the sooner Rachel can get all the communication out and, and inform the public as to our city business. Currently, our website reflects a meeting on September 1st and September 15th. So sooner we can change that, the better. But again, we do have some complications here to consider, so if we want to take some time and wait for August 4th, I can certainly communicate with, with commissioners in between then as to availability and preference.
Well, if you do that, please send, make sure all commissioners have this in front of them. Obviously, if it's in the packet, it's there, but.
Just to, apologies, President Dardis, this is not in the packet. I put this together about a half hour, four hour meeting, so.
Commissioners Zondell and Commissioner Jorgensen are not, are only viewing it online at this time. So the suggestion is make the decision on August 4th. Is that, is that a possibility, commissioners, in your consideration?
I'm honestly okay with either option. So I'm comfortable with whatever works for everyone else.
Thank you, Commissioner Zondell.
Same there.
Oh, yeah, back, right what she said. Okay, Commissioner Olson said the same.
Yeah, so is option one the most favorable?
That's.
Option one's the most favorable?
Well, it's most favorable, it's a recommendation of our city administrator.
I move, we go with option one.
We have a motion for option one.
And I will, I will second.
Commissioner Zondell seconds. We have a motion and a second to move forward of option one for our September meeting schedule. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Scott. We're moving on to item number nine, the city administrators' report.
Thank you again, Commissioner President Dardis and commissioners. I'll be brief. I really only have one update for you. In years past, we've had an employee appreciation event during the holiday season in the winter. Our employee committee has decided to make a change and move that to an, an employee appreciation picnic. And it is scheduled to take place on September 4th, the evening of September 4th at the lights. So I'm sure we'll be working to put more communication out there, but I just wanted to acknowledge that, that change. It is a significant change to move away from the, you know, from the seasonal holidays into more of a summer picnic, but I look forward to and welcome that change and hopefully have a good turnout. So with that, I will stand for any other, any questions or information I can provide.
Any questions for Mr. Scott? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondents, all correspondence that has come in has been distributed to the commissioners. It is in your mailboxes. Does any commissioner have any non-agenda items they'd like to bring forward at this Does any department head have anything you'd like to bring forward at this time? I'll remind everyone, when I call for non-agenda items, the commission cannot vote on them, but you're welcome to bring them forward. We have to do a public notice before we would actually take a vote on anything. Nothing, all right? Commissioner Anderson? Move adjourned. Commissioner Olson?
Second.
Ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned.